Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call the meeting to order. This is the October 8, 2003, meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission. Mr. Evans, do we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Yes, we do, Mr. Chairman. The agenda was posted on Friday in accordance with state and local procedures.
We have some minutes to approve. These are the minutes of August 27, 2003. The minutes indicate that Ms. Morantz was absent and Tracy Conrad was absent. For those who were present, do we have any corrections, additions, or a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Mr. Hockenadl to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Second? Second by Mr. Wright. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five to zero with two abstentions. The next item on the agenda is public comments. Anyone here wishing to address any matter before the commission may do so at this time. Please confine your remarks to three minutes and sign the sign-in sheet when you finish. If you're here on a matter that's on our agenda, we would prefer that you hold your comments until that item is called. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the first item that we can hear. We do have, let's see, one, two, two public hearings. Our public hearings are called beginning at 2:00 P.M., so we have a little bit of time until those matters can be called. So we will move on to our architectural approval items, and we'll begin with item number five, case 3.2390, application by Robert Greer for architectural approval for a new single-family residence with guest house located 523 Potencio Road, R1A Zone, Section 15. This matter was continued from the meeting of September 24, 2003, and I have to abstain from that item. The reason for the abstention is that I'm on the Board of Directors and the president of O'Donnell Golf Club, which is a neighboring property and has objections to the application.
Need to go to the new sheet. It's continued, requesting continuance.
Well, we'll need a motion to continue, but I think those who need to abstain need to abstain from that matter as well. Am I correct on that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, it'll be a little bit of a fire drill exercise as you walk out and come back.
Right.
I also am a member of O'Donnell Golf Course and therefore have to abstain.
And I also am a member of O'Donnell Golf Course, and I own the O'Donnell House, and I will be abstaining.
All right, so the three of us have to go.
Do I say it?
You need to state your abstention.
I am also a member of O'Donnell and will be and need to abstain, but I drew the short straw. So with that, we'll wait until they walk out of the room and see if we can hear a motion.
Madam Chairman, could I make a suggestion that you give the chairmanship to Commissioner Grant since you're going to abstain?
Oh, absolutely.
And if I could explain, under California law, when we've got a majority of the commission that has to abstain, and we no longer have a quorum, we have to draw straws by lot. Commissioner Morantz, by lot, drew the straw relative to participating for purposes of a quorum. She's indicated that she does have thoughts on the project, therefore, we've encouraged her and coached her to not participate in discussion and abstain when this item comes up for review. And with that, three planning commissioners will review and decide this item with Commissioner Morantz as an abstaining member. And we do recommend continuance for two weeks. They did some of the site work. There was some field work done, and there was feeling that there needed to be additional clarification, so two weeks will allow that to occur.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we continue case number 3.2390 until our October 22 meeting for the reasons of we need some more marking done on the project so all the commissioners could understand the layout of the house.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention, okay. So move for case 3.2390 to be continued to the meeting of October 22. That's item number six, case 3.2382, application by Hugh Capter for Jacqueline Simmons for application by Hugh Capter for Jacqueline Simmons for architectural approval for a new single-family residence located at 1675 Avenida Sevilla, I guess, R1B Zone, Section 35 and 36.
Mr. Chairman, Gabriel Diaz will give you a staff report on this item and give you an update on roughly where it is, because it's in a location that's kind of hard to find.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I don't know if you've had a chance to visit the site, but when you go in on Bogart Trail and you go, and when you go east on Avenida Sevilla, and when you come to the dead end, and then you go straight north, and that would be this driveway here leading up to Here's Avenida Sevilla once you come off Bogart Trail, and this is the subject property And over here is, you're looking off Avenida Sevilla up towards the mountain, and this is what you'll see. You'll see this nice house up there. Currently, it is a lot, a pad, a graded pad up there, and they're looking to build these retaining walls, have a pool, build the home on the lot that's already paved, I mean, graded, and make this circular driveway and retaining wall and driveway to go along with that. The size of the wall here is about 16 feet. It's a retaining wall. It's currently up there. These are high walls and rocks, and basically, it'll prevent it from eroding any further than what's existing. The height of the home is 25 feet, measured from the pad. It'll be a plaster finish. And it contains a pool and spa. And this is the primary view from where the home will be located there. There are no homes here. This wall is a big wall, but in the mass and scale of the area, it's not really, because you're so far away from your neighbors. Any questions?
What did Design Review say?
Design Review liked it, approved as submitted. They said it's going to be the most expensive driveway built.
If I could add a little bit, the two lots out in front, one of the lots, the one furthest to the south, has got a house that's approved. It's got a two-story element. So to some degree, most of that very attractive wall that you see in the drawing top left will be blocked by that house. And then when the other portion of the pie-shaped end of the street gets built, if you could point out the first location, Gabriel?
Right here.
Well, do it on the upper side.
Here, let me go ahead. Just use the mic.
This pie-shaped right here, the adjacent lot?
Yeah, one of the concerns from Design Review originally was just the design of this wall. What we did is we have a more refined exhibit. We didn't put it up. We have a lot of cross-sectional exhibits on this. Got a two-story element to this house backing up, so you really have a back-of-yard condition with pool, as I recall, up in the front. And this house, this lot, doesn't have a house on it, but again, you're going to end up with a house at the back, probably with not much in the way of windows, with view going the same direction as this house, because that's really the spectacular view. What the retaining walls do is basically take an existing pad height where the driveway is, there's an old driveway that was cut up and around, basically take that cut area, treat it with the wall, as opposed to having a fill slope and cut condition, which will never be very attractive. It will always look like a manufactured fill slope, because it just won't have the natural patina for another 10,000 or 20,000 years. So by putting in the walls, they basically start eliminating the scar that you see, and then they restore back down around the perimeters, and then another circular gravity wall in here. So at the end of the day, when this neighborhood is developed, from most vantage points, I'm not sure you're going to even see the house. You may see pieces of it. And if you've seen this, there's a house with a similar type roof situation in Park Andreas. It's probably one of the more spectacular houses in Park Andreas. In fact, probably is the architectural focus point in Park Andreas, right down the street. But completes our report, Design Review, after they worked through the wall issues, were fine with it, they never had any questions about the house, other than how tall is it?
Doug, I was at Design Review when this project first came for review, and there were a number of comments and problems with the design of the road and the wall. I guess it went through a couple of revisions or so. Is that what happened, and finally, Design Review got comfortable with it?
Yeah, the first revision, it was just, you know, we're going to do a wall, and it hadn't really been studied, and they asked the applicant to study it. Mr. Capter did, worked with staff in a couple of quick meetings, and I think the next time it went through, everybody was commenting that it's one of the best-looking walls we have in town.
Okay.
And I think there was an understanding that typically in Capter's designs, the finished product has an elegance that really has a long-term quality. And I think Hugh put that effort into the wall. We looked at two different design alternatives, and this was probably the strongest design of the two.
Yes, any?
Is this a two-story house, or why is it 25 feet tall?
Roof.
It's all roof?
Architecture. Yeah, it's a single-story house. Doesn't have particularly tall perimeters around the edge of the house, but it's got some ceiling height inside, and as I indicated, this is the second house in this area that has the same feel. It's pure architecture and design.
And when the other house is going on the lots in front, are they going to lose their view?
To the back?
Mm-hmm.
The one that's approved, I don't think, other than the service workers or somebody walking the dog run, would even have a view this way. They certainly would have a different view.
No, I mean, will this house lose its view from the?
On the other way, it's tall enough that it's going to look over. It may lose some of the valley floor, but it's going to look over almost everything below it. It's up high enough. You'd have to build 30-plus feet to take away this view. It became one of my favorite places to go have a sandwich while I was doing site reviews, because the view is picture-window perfect.
Doug, and as I understand it from your description, the neighboring properties have their view in another direction.
They clearly would, you know, the one house that's approved clearly is oriented to the southwest, and if the other house isn't oriented that way, they've lost their prime view.
They should be, okay. All right. Okay, any motions?
I'll move.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of case 3.2382, subject to conditions of approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
And we have one no vote and six aye votes. That takes us to item number seven, case 3.2398, application by Steve Lyle for architectural approval for a food court with seven tenant spaces on a 12,850-square-foot lot at 365 North Palm Canyon Drive, CBD Zone, Section 15. We have a staff report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, let me give you a little history on this property while Gabriel pulls the plans up. This property is a piece of property that, for many years, Jerry Augburn, Downtown Development Center and planning staff, has been looking at a series of different types of projects. The property owner worked with the city on the configuration of the property when we built the city parking lots around it. So what we basically have left is a very small lot with frontage on Palm Canyon Drive, and what they're proposing is a food court building with multiple tenants, with a range of activity, indoor and outdoor seating. And what I'd like Gabriel to do is go over the site plan and location. There are some questions with regards to some of the conditions of approval, but we'll give you a little briefing on, and if Gabriel, you can point out where the underground utility requirement, where that would affect it, and then we certainly can try and answer any questions.
Okay. Well, the site is just north of Amato and just south of Alejo. One of the issues that we do have here are is the undergrounding of utilities. Start off with that. This is the site plan. There are seven units going in here. This will be indoor seating. The food court, there will be no seating inside the actual units. The seating will be in the courtyard area here, which is inside, and then we got the outdoor seating. There will be an in-lu parking, because they cannot meet the parking requirement per the size that they have here for a lot. That is in the conditions, and we'll do that. As far as the undergrounding, the lobster company is right here to the south, and let me point out that pole. There's the lobster company, and there is the pole, and as you can see, the utilities are underground. Everything south of this pole, where the lobster company, there are no overhead lines. Everything north, as you can see by the pictures, the utilities are above ground, and one of the conditions are to underground utilities. And the applicant is not here and would like to contest that. As far as height, we have a 20-foot-high building. We got mechanical equipment that will be screened. Another issue that we staff decided that no string lights be used, I know that's another issue the applicant would like to address, but that's staff recommendation on that. We have stone, I think it's stone veneer. Yes, it is a stone veneer, and we have metal copper fascia. Another thing, Design Review liked this project. One of his comments were to continue the banding on the west elevation all the way through the door, add some landscaping in the trash enclosure area. They won't be able to do that, because for parking, you need to add the concrete, two-foot concrete sidewalk here, so that's not possible. But they also recommended that landscaping be put in in front of the parking spaces, and they're going to do that. That's a part of the condition, and they'll plant some trees here, make some little, you know, six-foot triangle shapes there for a tree, so that way they meet the 30% parking shading requirement. And that concludes my presentation. Signs are not part of this application. I'll come back later, at a later date. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Jerry Augburn, the Downtown Development Director, has also been working on this project, and we'd like to have Jerry's comments as part of the staff report, and then we certainly can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This development came before the Main Street Board about a year and a half ago. It was a much more intense development. It has been scaled back. Actually, the Main Street Board is very supportive of this, because we need foot traffic in that block. Retail doesn't perform up to standard there. Most of our restaurants, all the other restaurants are sit-down, longer dining period that peak at night. This is a daytime-peaking business that will help, we think, draw foot traffic to the block. So Main Street was very supportive of this, including the block captain from that block, who owns a restaurant in that block. So it does have neighborhood support in that regard. There are several minor issues, and I'm trying to do my best Steve Lyle impression here. He was told to show up at 2:00, so I guess he'll be here in a minute. The undergrounding of utilities, I think, is a matter of clarification. Mr. Lyle understands that that's a condition that he has to meet, but the staff report referred to an undergrounding of a utility on the north property line. Actually, if you look at the property, I believe the power poles are on city property or on adjoining property owner's property, not on Mr. Lyle's property. So if he is required to underground that entire line, then he's going to need to get an easement from the city and from at least one adjoining property owner, I believe. I may be incorrect, but that's the way it looks in the field. Another issue is there is a loading zone painted on the street in yellow, right adjacent to the ingress egress drive that goes into the city parking lot. It's about the length of two parking spaces. I have no recollection of why that was ever designated a loading space, except that there were events in that little open area from time to time, and I believe that was what was used to load and unload vendors. I know Mr. Lyle does not want to have the loading zone in front of him, because his loading area is in the back, and he doesn't want the stores front-loaded. Secondly, that would give two additional parking spaces that he could get at least 50% credit for, one parking space. He does not have a problem with paying the in-lu fees, but feels that he really doesn't want the loading zone in front of his, and usually that's a call of a business or a property owner, if they want a loading space on Palm Canyon Drive, which is not the best practice in the world, but a lot of businesses up and down the street don't have rear-loading capabilities. This does. He would like to ask that be a condition, that be considered by the city engineer to allow two spaces to go in there. Also, the handicapped access, I know that he has not had an opportunity to consult with Phil Kaplan. There are two handicapped spaces in the public lot immediately north, or immediately south of this, that face lobster company, that are ideally located for handicapped spaces, because they're right off Palm Canyon Drive. If he were to have to provide a handicapped space on his property, it would be to the back of his property, and handicapped patrons would be actually entering the back door or having to go completely around the facility to get in. So if there's some way to count the handicapped parking in the city lot to fulfill his requirement, that's where his handicapped customers are probably going to park anyway. Those are the major comments, I believe. We really, oh, I think there was one, he indicated to me, I was not in the Design Review sessions on this, there was a staff comment that the white tivoli lights were not approved. His recollection was, he initially went in with colored tivoli lights, which I didn't agree with, and neither did Design Review, and he sensed change into white lights, which are used in downtown and have been approved on other restaurants. And it's his belief, speaking for him at this point, that it was approved with the ability to use the white tivoli lights. And that's something we're very supportive of. If done in good taste, we think that adds to our festive kind of theme, which this is trying to target as well. So I appreciate the opportunity to make comments, and I'll answer any questions that
Mr. Evans, maybe staff can help us, and Mr. Augburn, with some of these issues, the underground utilities. Do we know how that is going to resolve itself?
Yeah, we've looked at that, and we being engineering and planning staff, and I think here's what we would suggest that you write, so that there's no problems in the condition of approval later on. The ordinance basically says you have to underground if you develop property and it's on or adjacent to your property, and according to what we've seen, that utility line is right over the property line. So it doesn't make sense to have a brand-new building with a utility line. It appears that lobster company, when they went in, they undergrounded the line up to their north property line, and all we're asking this applicant to do is to underground from that existing riser pole across the back of the parking area to the existing pole on the north, and leave that pole in. So basically, they're just going to do what the lobster company did, and just move that up to the next pole. And at that point, you'll have, as Gabriel indicated, the area south without the poles, the area north with the pole. If there's a concern on the applicant's part regarding the cost of the condition, this is in a redevelopment project area, and they could contact the redevelopment agency and see if there could be some assistance with that, because a portion of it does go across the city parking lot. You know, the width of the driveway is city-owned land. Technically, the commission doesn't have the ability to waive the requirement. You could defer it by covenant, but I think you'd just be deferring a problem later, and if they're going to rip that place up, it's time to put it under now. And obviously, you know, it's not as if they've got to go off-site and run lines. Now, if I'm misunderstanding where the utility lines are, you know, I need to be corrected, but I think it's just that north-south connection, and it's really a continuation of what appears lobster company did, because they have the riser at their property.
And the condition mistakenly said along the northern property line. It should say the westerly property line.
Excuse me, I think that was the confusion, but the power pole along the north property line is actually off our property, on an adjoining property owner's property. And that's what Mr. Lyle was asking clarification. He is not, he doesn't know what the cost implications are. I do recall, as does Doug, that we did underground for lobster company when they did their building, because that used to go all the way to the lobster company, and that was done. I guess my question is, why is there a need to leave the pole there if we're undergrounding?
Well, it's got to rise back up, and it services properties to the north.
The pole that's at the, which one?
The south.
The south pole? South pole.
The south pole here.
Southern pole, whatever.
Is Mike Allen, no, that's the? Is Mike Allen, no, that's the north pole. Currently, there's a pole right about here that basically is a riser pole that brings the utility out of the ground. We're saying, remove that pole, continue the undergrounding up to the pole that's right here, and then that becomes a riser pole. They may have to put a support system in to hold it up because the wires hold the poles up. And then that continues further to the north.
But there's another pole, Doug.
Down over here.
If I might, can I approach the?
You may.
It's better than the alternative of giving a dart.
I think he said that.
It's been there before. Actually, there's a pole right here. And it's all, this is the Lobster Company down here. It's underground to this point. And where you see, and I don't think anybody'd want those power lines strung behind this building, but there's a pole right here. And there's one about two or three feet off the property line right here. And they string between those two. And I guess my question is, this pole was, it's all underground over at this point. I don't recall seeing a pole here. And then if you're gonna underground all that, why leave the pole? Unless it carries telephone lines or something.
There's only two.
I know, I know. What I'm saying is, I think, I think the two in question. There's one right here. There's a pole right here that's on this property. It's about three feet off. This is the American Legion line here. And there's a pole right here. And my look at the site is that this has all been undergrounded to this point. Okay. And the pole's right here, which is pretty ugly.
What we were working off of was a diagram that is showing utility lines here and here. If there's a pole.
We're here. That's, this is.
Excuse me, I'm on the wrong side. Showing one here.
There's one here. There's not one here that I saw.
Okay.
There's one right here. And then there's one right here. This is all undergrounded, I believe, if you go out and look at it. The line's run all along here. So what you're asking him to do, I think, because the report said northern line, and these are telephone lines along here, I think what you're asking to do is underground all of this.
That line, whether the pole is here or here.
Then the question is, why would you leave the pole?
You would only leave, you would underground from here up and leave that pole.
Right.
Yeah, that'd be the only pole.
Just to keep the matter moving, I think everybody's kinda got that sort out. On the loading parking spaces, Marcus, is that your Bailey Wick and?
Yeah, what we will do is, we're gonna research why that loading area was put in in the first place.
All right.
And obviously, if it's not necessary, we'll allow it to be removed.
So we'll leave that to be worked out with staff. Then on the handicap space, do we need to require one here?
We would ask that you leave the requirement, that there be a handicap space, recognizing that if we can work out using the ones in the city parking lot, we will do that. I did meet with Phil Kaplan on that issue. Phil's position is, we're underparked relative to handicap parking and adding a food service facility that's intended to be fairly quick turnover. He felt that one additional one needs to be provided. And the question might be, is we may wanna put it in the city parking area because that's the best path of travel for the handicapped customers. If that's worked out, then they don't have to put it on site.
We'll leave that to staff then.
Yep.
And then the last item, the question was whether the white lights were approved?
Well, you know, there's two issues there. My recollection at design review is, we looked at the exact exhibits that are shown here, and they showed white lights. And I think our area of concern are the strands of lights hanging between palm trees. We've tried very hard to only use tivoli lights for architectural lighting, where it's following the architectural lines of a building. If, you know, and I don't disagree that it may not be attractive with this design of project. But I think my recollection at design review is the policy of letting people just string lights between palm trees. You're gonna end up with people that don't do it very well. And we will have a very hard time telling them that this project is different because it's architectural. So I think the design, my recollection, the design review concern really was, do you wanna allow people to just string lights between palm trees? If it were on the building, it would be very sharp and crisp with this architecture. But just hanging between trees, I just tell you, I don't think we would be able to control what would happen downtown with that.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. And I see that Ms. Conrad is ready to take some action.
I'll encapsulate it here. I'll move approval of case number 3.2398, application by Steve Lyle for architectural approval, subject to the conditions of approval to include working out with staff, the handicap parking space, removing the loading dock, and undergrounding the utility poles, leaving the pole at the northern property line, and undergrounding everything south of that, and no usage of tivoli lights.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Matter passes unanimously. We'll go back to our public hearing items. And the first public hearing item is item number three. Case 5.395, PD 59, application by Desert Chapel for revisions to the Desert Chapel Master Plan, Plan Development District 59 for consideration of special events, nighttime football games, and rededication of the Sunny Dunes Right-of-Way, locate on 10.16 acres at 630 South Sunrise Way, PD 59 Zone, Section 24, continued from the meeting of September 10, 2003.
Mr. Chairman, give you a very quick update. The applicant has asked for a continuance of this. They're still trying to work out issues relative to Sunny Dunes versus access easement. We've tasked them to try to figure out if they can fix the insurance issue. That issue is not resolved yet between the Mesquite Country Club Homeowners Association and Desert Chapel. And what we're trying not to do is put you in the position of Solomon, trying to pick between which position, trying to come to a solution on that. So we recommend a continuance.
Is there a motion to continue that item to October 22?
I'll make a motion that we continue this item for the reasons Mr. Evans just stated.
Thank you, Mr. Hokenadel. Is there a second to that? Mr. Grinch, you look like you're, are you awake? Thank you. Second by Mr. Grinch. And all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we got to roll call vote. Thank you.
Mr. Hokenadel?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Conrad?
Aye.
Mr. Grinch?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Morantz?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenbergh?
Aye. Thank you for reminding me. That takes us to item number four. This is case 5.0870, GPA, PD 268, tentative tract map 31318. An application by Ernie Noya for an amendment to the Plan Development District for the Indian Oasis Resort, a general plan amendment, a tentative tract map, and a tentative parcel map, and approval of final development plans for the Corporate Business Park. The project is located at the intersection of Mesquite Avenue and Crosley Road, Zone WM-1 and M1, Section 26. The following actions will be considered. I'm not gonna read all those, unless I have to, Mr. Evans, do I have to read all those items? But anyway, there are four, five items to be considered. And we have a staff report.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. The item before you is pretty complex. I'm gonna give you a little bit of background, kinda walk you through it, then I'll approach the boards, probably three or four-minute summary prior to that. You have essentially an entitlement that you've seen parts of in the past. Today before you have a request to certify an environmental document, to amend the general plan, to adopt some noise regulations for the Plan Development District, modification of an approved Plan Development District, and a tentative map, which would help to implement that Plan Development District. In 2001, the Planning Commission and the council approved the original project. In September of this year, Planning Commission voted to approve a minor revision and a parcel map in relation to this project. At that time, you included a parcel map dividing 17 acres into 10 parcels with a not-apart parcel for the golf course creation. You also approved final development plans for the construction of the first office building. The applicant has submitted a revised application to modify the approved Plan Development District. Originally, we had 500 hotel units and 200 timeshares. As part of the modification, the applicant's requesting kind of a more flexible approach to those 700 units so that they could be devoted to hotel, timeshare, vacation, condominium hotels, casitas, condominiums, and apartments. It's a range of flexible or more flexibility that the applicant is requesting at this time. The applicant has also reduced the overall square footage of the commercial office retail portion of the project from 500,000 to 400,000 square feet. The golf course remains the same, an 18-hole golf course. And then the last revision to the project description is a request to increase the height of the hotel from 100 to 130 feet in height. In order to do this, a general plan amendment is required. There's an amendment before you that would amend the text of the general plan as well as the physical plan itself. In terms of the project zoning, the site is zoned M1, W, O, and a different number of distinctions with the Indian land. I want to call that to your attention. In terms of the general plan amendment itself, we have an existing policy that was implemented in 2001, General Plan Policy 3.30.14, which established the Mid Valley Center and provided provisions for this project in order to allow the 100-foot height. There is a revised general plan description that's going to be handed out or has been handed out, included in a resolution, which would change minor portions, but the main and substantive change is renaming the policy to the Indian Resort Oasis and establishing a provision to allow the height of 130 feet in this project area only.
Can I just interrupt you? Alex, can you explain why this will be the only 130-foot building in Palm Springs?
Yes, that's a great question, Commissioner. We debated this back and forth a number of ways at staff level. We thought, should we amend the high-rise ordinance? Should we make it only in this Plan Development District? Should we make it only on Indian land? And the crux of the decision was, because this site is uniquely located in the city with large buffers to any other land use, we thought that it may be appropriate only to establish those height provisions in this location. And we also felt that that height may not be appropriate for other locations in the city. As you'll recall, this site is separated from the residential units to the east of approximately 1,250 feet. It's about 2,500 feet, 2,400 feet north of the existing residential to the south. It is essentially really an island in the city. So we felt as though because of the setbacks that could be established by development on this property, that the height was really not a concern. But we were uncomfortable going into the high-rise ordinance because that applies citywide. Thank you. One other element of the general plan amendment is a map amendment, and that was provided to you. We wanted to create a buffer between residential to the south and this site, which had been industrial. We indicated that the site plan would include some M15 designations, which is a multifamily, as well as establishing golf on the plan itself through the golf course element. And then lastly, leaving the industrial only in the location where the office commercial portion was anticipated to occur. That's an exhibit that was distributed as part of the resolutions and also separately at your seat as a one-page document. The next item that is under consideration is the adoption of the Plan Development District specific noise overlay. This is kind of a complex issue, and I'd like to also walk you through that. Essentially, our zoning ordinance uses a noise overlay in relationship to the airport that is quite old. The study was done in 1993, and since that time, the noise and sound characteristics of the aircraft using the airport have changed considerably. The recent FAR 150 Airport Noise Study indicated that the 65 CNEL diagram, which measures the average location of the 65 decibel noise level as a result of aircraft using the airport, has actually contracted since the original or the last zoning map was prepared. We also debated amending this designation on the entire map. And because of the number of other programs that are currently occurring, it was determined in review with city attorney and the development director that the best approach would be to amend at this time only the noise designation for this parcel. So there was another way to do it, but we felt most comfortable adopting the noise element just for this parcel. And what this does is, this would allow or essentially eliminate a prohibition against residential uses on this property. That's discussed in pretty great detail in your report. And if you have any other questions about that, we can get back to it. In terms of the other approvals, we do have a tentative tract map. This is the subdivision of approximately 233 acres into 36 parcels for future development. This is intended to create individual parcels for financing, development of the hotel, timeshare, golf, and other related uses. And the proposed tentative map essentially mirrors the revised site plan. I'll go up ahead and point the differences out to you. Lastly, there is the issue of the Cathedral City approval. A small portion of this project site is located in the city of Cathedral City. The developer is working with that community on getting approval for that portion of development. However, should such approval be unavailable, the applicant could approach the tribe for approval or revise the golf course plans and eliminate the movement of the golf course and that one hole off of the neighboring city and all entirely into the city of Palm Springs. So the applicant has a number of options he can utilize there. We're gonna work with them to do what we can to help this project move forward. What I'd like to do is approach the boards and then call your attention to a couple of things. But first, I wanna just let you know that we provided an exhibit with the, a single exhibit with the general plan amendment boundaries, a two-page exhibit of the project description in simple terms, correspondence from Wayne Brektel, which we'll probably get into in a little greater detail in a moment. And then there was a little package that was just handed out to you that has five items.
We'll hand that out.
Oh, I'm sorry, we'll hand that out after my presentation. I've been corrected. One step at a time. In 2001, the 273-acre project was approved. For orientation purposes, at the top of this map, you have Ramone Road, Crosley, and Mesquite Avenue. The project has subsequently been redesigned. You will recall that you recently approved a tentative parcel map here, the land use of which is depicted in this location. In terms of the overall uses, what we're asking you today is to approve this site plan, which is this plan and this phasing and this tentative map. We're also gonna show you some conceptual architecture and discuss some issues in terms of bikeways and equestrian trail. In terms of the overall uses, you'll recall the off- In terms of the overall uses, you'll recall the offices here, hotel uses here, golf course kind of spread throughout the project, future timeshare, retail along the corridor here, a tennis center, and casitas. You'll recall that the applicant has requested flexibility in the phasing, so the revised conditions will not discuss phasing. In terms of the tentative map, the tentative map essentially is entirely east of Crosley All the way through, we have the Whitewater Wash Storm Channel and Mesquite Avenue. The parcel map was in this location. What I've done is I've highlighted here some of the improvements that we can get into and discussion a little bit later. What I'd like to do now is kind of walk you through the applicant's idea of potential development through the conceptual architectural drawings. Before you today is not an architectural approval, but it creates a mechanism for the developer to build a one-hundred-and-thirty-foot-tall hotel. The only portion of this project where that height would be permitted would be the hotel. The applicant has provided some line of sight drawings here as well as a cross-section of the hotel. We did have a few community members that came to visit about a week and a half ago in response to receiving the public hearing notice. We were able to provide them with copies of some of these exhibits as well as the site plan. They went back to their board, and I don't think I see any of them in the audience today. So we may have a couple of people that want to talk about this, but by and large, we did a large mailing, and there wasn't any sort of, at least mentioned us or correspondence received by us, any great opposition to increasing the height from the hundred to the one-hundred and thirty. If you'll recall, this designation was all industrial, and what it provided for at the outset or prior to this proposal was a relationship like this, where you could have had thirty-to-forty-foot office buildings, industrial buildings, seventy-five feet from the property line. What is proposed as part of this project would be the timeshare here, about four hundred feet north of the residential to the south, the fairways, at a height of sixty feet. So you're seeing that there really is a lot less mass imposition of large structures to the residence to the south. The hotel height at one-thirty is a line of sight in this direction. It is about twenty-five hundred feet. So you'd be looking here to the timeshares and then here to the hotel. What this project has done is essentially eliminated a correlation ship between multifamily housing and a higher intensity or industrial use and put the possibility of a resort and golf and some business parks. So it's really reduced incompatibility of adjacent land uses, and that's one of the reasons that we're recommending approval today. In terms of the vacation and timeshare villas, this is the artist's conception of what the site plan could look like and maybe a character elevation. We have not taken this through designer view. This is not an architectural approval at this time. Here's also a partial plan for the retail village along Crosley, just to the east side, kind of a layout here, and some artist perspectives. Might be a good time to stop now and see if there's any questions.
Is the one-hundred-and-thirty feet, is that from pad up? Or is the terrain built up out where it is, or is it sucking down?
It's actually sloping away from the road.
You know, you can play with heights of where you would measure, and is it at the dike height? Is it this height? When we look at the actual structure, in the worst-case condition, it's a one-hundred-and-thirty feet. I didn't want to get into a situation where somewhere down the road, somebody argues point of measurement, so it's a one-hundred-and-thirty-foot-high building. So that's the worst case that the building could be, and recognizing that when they actually designed the final hotel, it may have some different grade relationships, but I don't think the building will be taller than one-hundred-and-thirty feet. I don't think we want to go through this again.
No, I don't.
So from the standpoint of how that works, you know, building height is always relative to where you measure from, but worst-case, one-thirty.
Thank you.
If we could cover a couple of items, we're going to pass out a packet of information. We've been working with the applicant and what we'd like to, in engineering, and what we'd like to do is go through that very quickly. We provided it in a legislative draft format so that we can walk it through fairly quickly and show you changes. And then I would like to comment on the letter from the Sierra Club to close our staff report. From the standpoint of, and we've numbered these, so we're going to go through in numerical order, numbers on the lower bottom right-hand corner. First page, we made some typographical changes, nothing substantive. Second page, we just referenced the new traffic report. That is the changes that we did on that resolution. If you go to page five, this is the resolution approving the general plan text as well as the map amendment, and we made some minor changes primarily to some wording. It was not legislative draft having to do with, I believe, the equestrian trail and the fact that we're discussing this with the applicant. We don't believe it's his intent to remove it from the general plan, and I think we came up with language on how we can add it as a condition of approval so there would be a trail in the future when and if it connects to something, but I believe that's the position. Item A on page eight is the actual general plan text. What we took out was a reference to kind of a hook to phasing. If you look in your staff report, it originally in the middle of the text said the construction of the timeshares or residential is dependent upon building the adjoining golf. And what we did was we took that linkage to phasing out and in turn prepared the next page, item nine, exhibit B, which is the actual general plan map. And the change there is we took the industrial designation off of the golf course areas south of Mesquite and west of Dyna Shore, moved the industrial only into where the office complex is that you previously approved. And that way, if they were to build the residential freestanding and not build the golf course, we'd have to come back in and redo the general plan in that area. I think that gives us adequate feeling, and I still think that the applicant believes that the timeshare will come onboard with probably golf. That's the marketing hook for selling the timeshares or the residential, but he was very concerned about implications of phasing relative to being able to market this in a very tough resort market. It's going to be tough to get this project through the financing and development stage after entitlements. Item, page number ten, is the beginning of the resolution that approves the revisions to the planned development district and the one-hundred-foot height limit and all the other changes. And Alex, I don't know where the legislative changes were on this one, other than the last page. Fourteen has to do with a, provide a future trail as opposed to the way it was worded before. It basically was worded that there was a problem relative to the request to not have an equestrian trail anywhere near the property, and we think we've worked that out. Probably the guts of the changes really started occurring on page fifteen. These are the ones that the applicant looks at most carefully, and so do we, because they really become the exactions and the terms and conditions of the permit. Item number three, we recommend you delete that in its entirety, and basically, these conditions of approval replace the conditions of approval for the existing planned development district. That's why we showed them to you in legislative draft in your packet, and then today, we've got some additional changes, so this is the document we'd like you to focus on. Page fifteen, number three, that had to do with phasing and with the general plan amendment diagram that we've just pointed out. We don't think you need that. Item four was just a restating of the type of development and the intensities of development. Item number ten has to do with mitigation measures from the environmental assessment. We just add a reference to exhibit one, and that will basically, when it goes to council, just be all the mitigation measures in the environmental assessment you have on your desk that covers the environmental concerns. Change on number page seventeen, nineteen, we just, that sentence was not needed, doesn't do anything. Twenty-three is consistent with, you know, dealing with the noise and making sure there's full disclosure relative to any residential project or activity. Item thirty-four, we just cleaned up the reference to the existing noise or outdoor lighting standards, and then thirty-five through thirty-seven are no longer needed. They have to comply with those ordinance requirements, so we'll just take them out. Going to page nineteen, forty-two, they're going to have to comply with the parking ordinance, so we just took out all those conditions that we normally put in if it's a site development project so that people know the things that come up in plan check. On page twenty, just a couple of fairly minor wording changes. And then on page twenty, fifty-eight, just taking out that reference, that's a dated condition from the original project and putting in referencing to the biology mitigation, which I'll explain in a moment. Fifty-nine really was already addressed in engineering conditions, so it's not needed in planning. Sixty has to do with an offer of dedication for an equestrian trail in the Wash to be determined with the final PD, really when you actually design the golf course. The applicant and staff believes it'll be on the east side of the Wash, not running through the middle of the course, and it will take a little bit of finessing around the property ownership and jurisdictional issues, but we think we can work that out. We've done it on other golf courses, and we've made all the trails work all through this town when we've developed golf courses, and we're confident that in working with some flexibility, we can get there with this project. Sixty-one was redundant, the one we previously took out, so we just took it out. There's no need for it. And sixty-two, basically just references to the fact that there needs to be a release from Cathedral City or a permit by Cathedral City, and I've talked to their planning director, and they're working on that, and I'm confident that will be worked out. Engineering conditions, again, we're revising the conditions that were previously approved, so some of them are relatively minor, and what I'll do on page twenty-two, that's a very minor issue. Item twenty-three, basically putting in the revised traffic conditions from the new traffic study, so we just took information out, inserted, and I think we've got the same coverage and a more current traffic study reference. On page twenty-four, number five, this is the item that we talked you at your last meeting on, where the applicant asked that you just delete this requirement. And what we've done is we've put in the last sentence that basically says, this condition shall be eliminated if SeVAG in city enter into a reimbursement agreement. The council's already approved that. We've submitted that information to SeVAG. We're optimistic that we might hear back from SeVAG by next Wednesday, and we're optimistic that this condition will not be needed. I think the applicant will ask you if that's the case. I don't want it as a condition. Take it out. And that's really an issue that the commission, the last time you looked at the office project, you said, let the council kind of deal with that one. But that's a change there as far as how it would be handled operationally. Let's see, on twenty-four, six A, basically just talking about easements if they go off the property. Eight, on Crosley, and here's where we're going to probably need to spend some time after the public hearing, and Alex will go back up to the board and show you the bikeways. We've been taking a look at the bikeways and trying to make them fit with adjoining properties, with this property, because you're matching up on edges, you're moving a bikeway that was supposed to be out near the mid-valley parkway along Mesquite and Crosley Road, and we've got the existing municipal golf course and things to the south. And staff's position is on Mesquite Avenue, this should have a bikeway that's out of the street, even though the planning commission, when you reviewed the office complex option or portion, you gave the developer the option of putting the bikeway in the street as a painted bike lane because there wouldn't be parking in the street. In looking at that and looking at this master plan and looking at the idea of trying to make all the uses work together, I'm going to describe it really simply. We hope that one day, we see twenty business people, maybe not in suits, walk out of the office complex on the west end of the office project, walk down the street to the commercial, walking three or four abreast on a wide bikeway that has a resort feeling as opposed to a sidewalk that looks like it's next to a major thoroughfare. You know, and I know the applicant may have a different belief in what that image is. If you go to the west of this site, all the way down to Gene Autry, the next street, we did an industrial warehouse building, mini-storage, and it's got a twelve-foot bikeway. So our concern is we shouldn't start the bikeway at Gene Autry, drop it back into the street when you get in front of the office complex, and then have it come out of the street when you get to the intersection at Crosley. And I honestly think that if this project gets built, we will see people in business attire moving around and resort attire moving around, and that we really want to have a resort feel next to our roadways, whether it's an office building, a commercial building, or a hotel or residential. So I know the applicant's a little bit concerned about that, that we're backtracking, but when I actually sat down and started plotting all the conditions and where the bikeways would be and wouldn't be, it just didn't seem to fit with what Palm Springs has been trying to do. And I think when you take a look at what Lifescapes did with that master plan, what they would have recommended, they really sat down and said, let's talk about interconnections of where people walk and maybe ride bikes, and one of these days, they might be on segways or whatever those two-wheeled things are. This could be very dynamic if you have enough room and you're not putting people in the street. I don't think we'd want to see advanced individual transportation in fifteen years going down a painted bikeway in the street, trying to go from resort to another land use. So I know the applicant's concerned, but I think in the long run, while I know bikeways have been a thorn in this project for a while, that that one, the commission should look at. So on Crosley, we're recommending that they connect down to the municipal golf course where we have a bikeway. We have a bikeway, twelve-foot bikeway or an eight-foot and five-foot down Crosley on the west side. The applicant has indicated he would like to have the bikeway on the east side near the condos or timeshare, and we've recommended that, actually, since that connects to a sidewalk at the fairway condos, that on the east side of Crosley, that that actually be an eight-foot meandering sidewalk, and we try to keep the bikes on the west side of Crosley. On Mesquite, we're recommending either a twelve-foot combination on both sides of Mesquite, east of Crosley, or an eight-foot bikeway with a separate five-foot sidewalk. Let the developer work with the feel. And then along Mesquite, along the frontage of the offices, we are recommending that that be a bikeway. And we're going to bring that up to the council's attention because you've already made the decision there. There's three options, so we're... decision there, there's three options, so we're gonna ask the council to look at the three options next week. If you go to page twenty-seven, I think most of those changes I've covered on the bikeway issue. The bottom one has to do with cart tunnels and just revised. Ramon Road, I think those are just new conditions that deal with the potential for improvements on Ramon and Landau, but I think that would be the very last phase of the project in all likelihood. The rest of the changes, I think, are relatively minor and pretty straightforward, and we've gone through them, I believe, with the applicant, so there shouldn't be any, any great concerns. The next item, as you get back to page thirty-five, is the incorporation by reference of the mitigation measures, and what we'll do for council is actually list them all out, but they're in the environmental assessment that you've had previously under separate cover. And then on page thirty-six, exhibit B, these are the conditions of approval that only will apply to the track map, the subdivision map, so they would be in addition to the conditions for the overall planned development district. And that's the way we did it for the other project, and we worked real hard, and the applicant worked exceptionally hard, to try to get those additional conditions whittled down to one page. And I think, I think he thought we could get it down to four, and I think with everybody's hard work, we got it down to one. So it's a little bit easier to track the supplemental approvals as you go through. Let me talk about environmental stuff as quickly as I can, and I'll try not to get too riled up. We received a letter today from the law offices representing the Sierra Club and Center for Biological Diversity. They basically have contested the project, the environmental documents, the process, the mitigation measures, and have asked the planning commission to deny the project. Staff recommends that you do not yield to that recommendation on their part, and I'd like to just touch base on a few things. This is an approved project. If it wasn't for the change of the hotel and a little shift of land use, and a little bit of additional property in the wash, the applicant could withdraw the application today and build a project. So we haven't done anything but come back in and said, "Let's amend the project," and the Sierra Club showed up this time, and they didn't submit any comments the first time this project was approved in 2001. So they've entered the, the picture late, and they've contested a project that's basically just being redesigned and, and updated. Their concerns about Coachella Valley milkvech, the surveys were done, there were no milkvechs found on site, this is a species that could pop up anywhere in sandy soils. So they've made the assumption in the leap that just because that could happen, and you could survey for years and years and years, that this is milkvech habitat. As of this point, there is no known endangered species on this site, and under endangered species law, there's no take, because there's no animal or plant there to take. So we believe the analysis is appropriate in the environmental document, we believe that the mitigation is appropriate. So in addition to the standard analysis, this project was tested against the draft tribal multi-species habitat management plan, and mitigation measures per that plan were put together, they're incorporated by reference, and they have to do with, you know, dealing with an eight-hundred-per-acre fee for mitigation and acquisition of environmental impacts, native plants as much as possible in the whitewater wash, outdoor lighting that's sympathetic to the types of nocturnal animals in the area, pre-construction surveys for burrowing owls, pre-construction surveys for desert tortoise, actually looking for burrowing owls during the construction process, you know, so there's a, a pretty, pretty extensive range of mitigation. So it's consistent with the tribal habitat conservation plan. This is Indian land, this is land, the only reason you look at it is because we have a contract with the tribe, and, you know, we've gone through the process, and we've consulted with the tribal planning staff to try to make sure we meet all the concerns of the tribal council. The Coachella Valley multi-species habitat conservation plan, while it's not released for review, this property is not in a conservation area, it's not designated for open space, none of the property is, and the only mitigation at the end of the day will be the operational ones relative to burrowing owls, plants, as far as what you plant in the wash, and then also the tortoise surveys and the payment of a fee. So this one's consistent with that outline and that structure. So at this point, we do recommend that the mitigation is adequate, and what we'll do is we'll prepare some response information for council in writing. I know the applicant's gonna respond in writing, and we'll put that information into the record for the city council decision if the planning commission moves this item today. That completes our report, and we'll certainly try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody, any, any person wishing to speak on this item should come forward at this time. Please give us your name and address, sign the clipboard before you go, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
I'll try not to speak too quickly. We do have a number of items to, to cover. I'm Marvin Ruse, Monero Smith and Associates, seven-seven-seven East Talkwoods, project planners and engineers. Staff has done a remarkable job turning most of this around. We still have a couple of questions and comments on that, and without getting into a lot of detail, I have a couple of just administrative issues. The project is two-hundred-and-sixty-three total acres, two-hundred-and-sixty-one of which are in Palm Springs, two of which are in Cathedral City, so all references to acreage should, should be changed to that. All references to our request to remove the equestrian bike path as part of our application should also be taken out. There's a couple of places in the resolutions that that still exists. We did not request a removal of the equestrian trail from the general plan, that's not part of our application. So, you know, those are areas that we'll, you know, we can review with staff down the line and not have to go into in great detail today. The first request we have on page nine, the exhibit that shows the general plan, we did agree to show the golf on the general plan, diagram south of Mesquite, we would not like to show it north at this time, not that we're not gonna build it, it's just, we feel it's, it doesn't serve any purpose that we had before. Golf is allowed in the industrial zone, and we need that flexibility, we think, to continue to move ahead with that. Again, on page twelve, another reference to our request to eliminate the equestrian trail, and we'll get into that. Page twenty-four, we are protesting the reimbursement to, on the Mid Valley Parkway, and as previously stated, I won't go into that in more detail, we'd like that condition Our primary concern today is to, on conditions, is to return the bike path conditions of approval to our, what we achieved at our last session with the commission, and that is to give us the flexibility to, to put the bike paths in the best place we can possibly do that. In general, we're, we're, we agree that on the hotel site, that those would be meandering onsite-type bike paths, and also on the west side of Crosley. However, as you go along Mesquite, we have some severe grade issues, we have some that we are not totally sure of exactly how it's gonna work, but as you get close to both the retention area, which is gonna be a tunnel, tunnels on both sides, and the elevation of the road, as you're going up to the bridge, they have to be in the street, they just can't possibly be, because they're gonna be twenty feet below, there's no way to get them back. We just like it, the way it was approved at the tentative parcel map, which was the three, the three alternatives, leave, but leave in, the alternative allows striping, striped bike path in the street. And we think that, without getting into a lot of detail today, we can come back on our final development plans, the final golf course, the final everything, and show those in great detail, give us the flexibility to do that. And that would really be it on the conditions of approval. I would add to the Doug's comments on the environmental assessment, they basically made two comments. One is, you know, maybe you didn't do the survey at the right time, we did do the survey at the right time. What our survey says, what our biologist says, is in some years, there might be, it's, it's not, it is, it's a habitat type that could support milkvech at this time, and when he's been on the site, it has not shown that. The other is, was an issue of the blow sand source. Alex, I think if you pull the maps out, so you could look at the, the aerial photograph, this site is cut off totally from all other blow sand sources. If you look at, we have Cimarron Golf Course, and I think this is actually, the photograph is probably too new to show it, but we have Cimarron, which is in, from Ramon Road north, that entire wash system has now been eliminated from, as blow sand, or as, as sand, and then south of the project, so Lowe's is now in, other things are now in along that whole system. The blow sand at that point does not satisfy any down valley, sand receptacle areas, French Hill lizard, et cetera. The only thing that this would do would be stopping blow sand from going through the Whispering Palms neighborhood of Cathedral City. So their comment that it wasn't addressed, we did, we did address it, there is, there is no, there is no taking at this time, and there is no disruption of a, of an established blow sand source. So once again, they've shotgunned this, they're not using facts, and they're trying to blackmail this project. Applicant is here, and we'll also discuss cooperation of staff and some other issues, but our primary is to get back to the conditions on the sidewalk that we can live with, and those other couple of comments I made. Any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Ruse. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Ernest Neuer, excuse me, sorry, I drank it. Four-two-nine East Talkwoods Canyon Way, Palm Springs, and I'm the project manager, and I actually have no complaints. Okay, so I'll start with that. No, the staff work very hard, we, we spent a lot of time trying to get a handle what, what I was concerned with the last time. We, we got it, oh, he signed me in. We, we got that handled down, we, we made, certain things were resolved as late as six o'clock last night, and I read certain things five minutes ago, but we're in, we're in good shape. It works better, I think, for them as well as for myself. I wanna mention just a few points. First is the general plan, when you give Doug an inch, he takes a yard, you know, he said, "Okay, I'll take that off, but, you know, make it golf, then he, the whole map's golf." Well, you know, so do what Marvin said, and make south of Mesquite, but, but it's a good compromise, it protects the city and it works. Basically, the, the real issue now is to, is to, 'cause I got the flexibility I need. The bike path, I don't wanna go into it. Doug could have it on the west side, he proved to me it shouldn't be on the east side of Crosley, south of Mesquite, he can have it, it makes sense to connect it that way, I didn't want it, but it's fine, but I need the option on Mesquite, because I don't think it's smart, just because some mini storage has an onsite one on Jean Autry for five-hundred feet, that I should put fourteen-hundred feet of, of meandering bike path in front of an area that is really not logical to ride there. So I wanna put it in the street there, but maybe it works out otherwise, I just want that flexibility. But otherwise, everywhere else, we, we want it, that's okay, I mean, the staff wants. As far as the environmental, this is a biological island, I mean, there's nothing that can go north or south, nothing can migrate, Fish and Wildlife told me that, I talked to them today, and they said, "No," you know, but, and I told them when we first met with Doug two and a half years ago, I said, "Assume it's there," because the first thing they said is, "You gotta do the right time of the year," and I said, "Well, let's assume it's there, what do we gotta do?" And all of a sudden, we have some other people thinking we should do more, which we don't think is right, and as an Indian land, I, I can't just make the decision myself, 'cause I affect all future Indian landowners. So you guys do your thing, and then we'll go on from there, but I thank everybody, staff, and I mean that sincerely, and engineering's getting to be my favorite department, which, you know, which is unbelievable. I mean, they, he gave me a clean copy of all the conditions without the red line, so it would make it easier for me now. I mean, is that good, is that cooperation? I have, I have nothing else, thank you, I'm open for any questions.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing and return to the commission for additional questions and comments. Yes, Ms. Conrad?
Well, you know, I would be one that would be very concerned with the height, and I've said before that I think that the height is not a problem, as, as long as the architecture is spectacular, and I would just say that the, that, I know this is not an architectural approval, but when you come back with one, I think your character elevation on the timeshare vacation villas with the stepping down at the ends of the building could be applied possibly to the hotel to mitigate the hundred-and-thirty-foot height, and since it's not a final design, maybe you could direct the architects toward that, 'cause one end of your hotel in these pictures has some of it, and the other one doesn't, and I think that, that makes it even more palatable. I think Mid Valley Center is the dumbest name I've heard, no, and I think changing the name is a, is a good idea, and with that, I would move approval, and it's, it's a gigantic undertaking, so. I move approval of application number five-point-oh-eight-seven-oh GPA PD two-sixty-eight, tentative track map three-one-three-one-eight, and do I have to read any more than that? Subject to the conditions of approval, and I'll address, this, I guess, would be my thought. I, I think, I think the request to change the industrial map on page nine is not unreasonable. I think on page twelve, the equestrian trail, since they're not asking to remove the equestrian trail, we don't wanna remove it, because someday it may connect, and we should have that option. With regard to the bike path, oh, no, sorry, on page twenty-four, condition number five, I think that the, the planning commission does not have purview over this, and we should leave it to Sea Vag and to the city council and leave the condition as written. And with regard to the bike path, it, it sounds like the applicant is tending toward wanting to do the right thing where it makes sense, and I think leaving the flexibility where we can still have the ability to deny it at the, at the final proposal is not also unreasonable. You, you have, you're, you're very concerned with that, I think-
You could add a condition if you wanna leave that last "or" in.
Mm-hmm, yes, yes, that's what I wanted to-
You could put, "Subject to review of final development plans and approval by the planning commission," so that you ultimately retain the authority as to bikeways that you want in the public right of way.
Absolutely, that's my intention, and that's my motion.
I'll second.
I have some questions before we vote. Alex, maybe you can help me. The, 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 the hundred-and-thirty-foot height limit, I, I think I'm okay with here because of where this project's located, but I, I know that that's gonna be a controversial item at some point. And my question wa, is, on the diagram we have on the board, on the south end of the project, there's a blank space, and it looks to me like that blank space is, is, if, if I'm seeing, reading the diagram right where the hotel is, it's close to that hotel. What is that blank space?
On the north side, that's the market fair property.
At the very top? I know, but, but my question is, what can that be? I mean, if, if, for example, if that, if that property up there were developed in, in single-family residences, we'd have single-family residents right next to a hundred-and-thirty-foot hotel. So my question is, as to that piece, and then on the piece to the, to the, would be to the east, I guess, west, what is that zone for, what's the zoning in those areas, and are, and is staff comfortable that we're not going to get into conflicts over the height because of those pieces, which are now-
height because of those pieces, which are now relatively undeveloped?
I'll address both of those issues. The Market Fair site has currently got an industrial designation, and, you know, it's either going to be an industrial land use, an office land use, or a commercial land use. I don't anticipate any residential there, from the standpoint of a future conflict. And to the west, that's an existing industrial subdivision. It's already developed. The applicant is working, and I think has secured the master lease, so that will be a complementary industrial with maybe some service commercial-type activities. So on the north and the west, I don't see any conflict potentially, and that Ramone Corridor is really probably going to push itself more towards retail. And I think you've got a pretty good relationship up there between the Indian owners of the land, the prospective owners of the land, as well as the applicant and the Alatis on this property. So there's a pretty good relationship, I think, developed all around there.
The other, the other concern I have, I guess, is, with regard to the height, is that I realize that the, creating the 130-foot height limitation is going to be confined to this PDD. And, but, are we, are we comfortable, staff comfortable, that we're not going to get into a situation where we're going to create some sort of precedent here, and be giving this project 130 feet, and not putting ourselves in a position where we're going to have a tough time telling others, "We're not going to give them that height. We're going to give them 75 feet," you know, or on Indian land, 100 feet.
I think we're very comfortable with the circumstances of this site. It's very unique in the city. The only other piece of property in town that remotely could be considered similar would be the Palm Springs Classic Project, which you've already approved, and it has a traditional high-rise cap at 60 feet for building, usable building with some mechanical equipment above. So I don't think you'll find any other locations. Could somebody use the argument and say, "You've done it over here"? Sure, it'll probably happen, but I'm not sure you'll be able to make remotely the same types of findings.
Why couldn't, why couldn't the Classic Project make that argument?
The Classic could come back in and make that kind of request, and if you take a look at the Classic Project, and if you were to put a hotel in the most easterly central portion of that site, you probably could make the same types of findings and have the same types of relationships. You might be a little bit closer to the Dream Homes. But they've looked at that project, they're confident that's the project they're going to build, and they are still very optimistic they're going to start that project this fall.
The other point, last point I had, is that in the staff report, it says that staff supports allowing the applicant and market to determine the project phasing, with the exception of the timeshare and multifamily residential, which must be accompanied by a minimum of nine holes of golf. Staff does not want to create a situation where timeshares and multifamily residential uses are constructed freestanding without the golf. And I'm, my question is, how is that concern addressed in the conditions? And I raise that question because condition 61, which seems to address that issue, appears to have been taken out.
What we, what we did is, we had a very lengthy discussion with the applicant about project phasing. And I've mentioned this before, a resort development with a golf course is the most difficult type of project to finance that I think we can deal with. Very, very challenging. What we did was, as a trade-off to taking that tie, timeshare and golf, what we did was, my concern was, that if that timeshare project were to be developed, and Alex, why don't you point it out, by itself, freestanding, and the rest of the project didn't go forward, you could have that residential project completely surrounded by industrial land on our general plan. And the applicant suggested that maybe we just designate the area south of that residential area as all golf course, so that if, remote possibility, and I believe it's remote, that they built timeshares or residential without golf, and that's all that happened, before any additional development could happen, you'd have to amend the general plan, and in all likely, it would probably change the land use pattern to more residential or something else. If the golf course didn't go forward, who knows? Maybe, maybe Knott's Water Park would come in and want to do a big entertainment complex that could, could work into that area. So what we did was, as a trade-off, we basically tied up the general plan and the PD to where it's golf. That's all you can do around that. So I think that that was a pretty strong concession on the applicant's part to deal with that, I think, remote possibility. And again, whether the, you know, the office goes first, you know, the applicant feels he can do that, the commercial could go next, along Crosley. You know, the Ramone Corridor could fill up in two years. And all of a sudden, that commercial becomes hot as a, you know what, firecracker, and that goes first. You thought I was going somewhere, didn't you, Mark? From the standpoint of, you know, the hotel, that one is the toughie, and then the golf course and the other. So we just looked at it, and I've met with too many people that have tried to do hotels to think we can predict the phasing. I don't think we can. I think they'd just be back asking you for a different phasing program.
Any other, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Unless there's a question.
I want to respond, if I could, to your height, because I think you don't understand how this height works. May I?
We've closed the public hearing, unless there's a-
I have a question, someone asked.
Unless there's a question.
Question?
Question?
Yeah. My que, I'm satisfied. Any other comments?
I just want to be clear that I do agree with the director that the bike paths should be out of the street. But where it might be critical and absolutely impossible, I think it's not unreasonable to retain the flexibility.
Any other, any other questions of the applicant or staff at this point? We'll have a roll call vote, please. Michelle?
Mr. Hockenado?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Conrad?
Aye.
Mr. Grinch?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Morantz?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberger?
Aye.
It's 3:15, so why don't we take about a seven-minute break, and then we'll come back and finish our-
We're going to resume the meeting and...
Oh, we don't have... Princess isn't here, yes. We need our princess. Where is she? Hey, we wouldn't be able to function without her, she's great.
I knew what it was. Milk bitch.
Did you bring one? It's kind of... It looks like a spindly spurge is what it looks like. Oh, you wouldn't touch it?
We'll take up next item number eight. If staff's ready. This is case 3.2397, application by Millwood Construction for architectural approval of two professional office buildings for contractors' office workspace at 2,000 Vistachino P Zone, Section 1. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman and respected members of the commission, this proposal for two office buildings... Oops. Actually, this would be... Well, first of all, I'll try and put it in perspective because I think this is not as easy to understand. Vistachino, and then we have Little Sahara, and it actually loops around the entire... It makes a little back to... This is Cerritos Road off of Vistachino. The airport runway is right diagonally across. The... In Sunrise, it's not that far from the Sunrise-Vistachino corner, okay? So, over here, we have Sater Brothers Shopping, little shopping area. So, this is east of Sunrise, correct. And this is... Everything there is zoned P for professional office because of the noise. It was an overlay. And so, we do have adjacent multifamily and even one single-family home, but is now zoned P. So, I want to make that clear as to what we really have adjacent wise land use, but the zoning designation is a little different. Then, everything south of it is CSC for Commercial Shopping Center. This proposal, when we see before you, we went back to design review twice for the architecture. It was approved at the last with some conditions that were included. I can go over those, that are included in the conditions of approval. Basically, wanting to eliminate door windows, beefing up some of the depth to give it a little bit more of a southwest feel, not... They don't want a lightweight feel. They wanted a massing feel to it. Vegas, remove Vegas from the end, use divided light windows. And this is the recessing of the windows would help with the two-by-six framing, would give that appearance of more substantial depth to the structure. I wanted to also point out what is adjacent in the neighborhood. So consequently, I took some photos to try and do a panorama for you because it's not easy to understand there, nor perhaps it is when you see this. But basically, if we would start here at this corner, we have a desert water facility, a little capped facility that's fenced and has some semblance of landscaping. There's a lot of vacant land around here. We go through a vacant lot, single-family residence, vacant lot. Then, we're back here into this multifamily area, okay? And this is something that's actually facing from Park Avenue. So, you're seeing the rear right here. Multifamily, multifamily, vacant lot, multifamily, and then we're over to Cerritos. And then, if we actually proceed and we look along Vistachino, it's like, well, what do we have past this Cerritos and Vistachino? We have actually a church. First of all, the parking lot at the corner of Cerritos and Vistachino, and then this is the church. So, the only two structures that we actually have that are very close to this to even use for relevancy are is the church and then an auto zone. And the auto zone is kind of over here. It's diagonal from this property. And the rest of it, it's vacant land. So, for... I can describe the buildings briefly. They're relatively modest in size, 2,700 square feet, 2,100 square feet. There... And this is zoned P, but these are for a contractor. And that designation is acceptable in the P zone if they have an A or a B license. So, before we've proceeded with the processing of this application, he gave us his license, and I have that on file. And he's a B, has a B license. There's... Staff has chosen and recommends that we do not include this. If we really want to see... This should be turned around. This is here. So, if you wanted to do a directional, although it reads this way, it's much more easily understood, this is north. We don't... We're not recommending approval of this driveway. There's an eight-by-eight roll-up door here that staff would prefer to see here at the interior of the project. So, there's no implication of affecting the multifamily residences across the street. And that's probably the one design change that we're recommending that's not obvious. I think that concludes my staff report, and I'm certainly open to questions. Thank you.
Any questions of staff at this point? Anybody here wishing to speak on this item? If you'd give us your name and address, please, and sign the clipboard before you leave.
My name is Gerald Miller. I'm president of Millwood Construction Company. Mr. Chairman, fellow members, I really don't have anything to say, but I just... I'm available for comments or questions if the staff or chairman or members have any questions on me for this project.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Everybody ready for action?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of case number 3.2397, subject to the conditions of approval, and I don't know whether they're on there or not, that the roll-up door be reversed.
And eliminate the driveway.
And eliminate the driveway.
Is there a second on that? Mr. Hogan, either?
I'll second.
We have a motion in, and we have a second for approval, subject to the conditions as described. Any further comment or question? Mr. Grinze.
Question... The conditions also include changing the windows and the comments by design review, correct?
That's correct. It would be condition of approval number seven.
Okay.
In the planning conditions.
Good.
Any other questions or comments? If not, this is an architectural approval item. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next item is number nine, sign permit. Application by the Palm Springs Fabulous Follies for a sign permit for the Plaza Theater located at 128 South Palm Canyon Drive, CBD Zone, Section 15.
Mr. Mayor is back... Mr. Mayor, I'm getting ready for tonight. Mr. Chairman, this is an item that the city council amended the zoning code. They've had first reading and second reading of the revised code. It's a code section that provides for specific criteria for historic theaters in the downtown or on city-owned property. And there's only three locations that this ordinance would apply. The city council approved that ordinance. The commission did not. So, what we're doing is processing this application in accordance with the approved ordinance. We will not be able to issue any sign permits pending the effective date of the ordinance, which is probably three weeks out, I believe. So, we've done this before where we process projects in accordance with ordinances that have been approved, but we can't issue permits. The ordinance had several areas where the commission had to make findings. The first finding is that the project would not disturb the historic character of the historic resource, too, that the signs are visually creative and in scale with pedestrian activity, that the signs will... In this case, we added another one that provide for direct marketing of downtown, and that the sign as designed would not affect the public health, safety, and welfare. In this particular case, the sign features an electronic message board, a television, flat-screen television that has been used throughout the past season. And the applicant feels that it's really important, considering he's lost visibility and signage with the redevelopment of the Louisa's Pantry property and the outdoor patio. So, the commission is basically considering this under that approved ordinance. You have to review it in context of the ordinance and the findings. And we did take this to design review on Monday, and they had recommendations that we articulated in item B and C. Item D, as a staff recommendation, having to do with the video screen as well as audio. And the concern about the audio is that, and the ordinance says this, you cannot disturb adjoining properties. You do have outdoor dining next door. And we just think that the audio is probably going to have to be at a very low level so that you don't hear it while you're dining. And we've had complaints during last season that the video and audio was a little bit too loud and that customers didn't really like sitting out near the sidewalk, and we just don't think that that's appropriate. So, we added a condition to that effect. With that, I'll show you the plans. He was there earlier. The proposed signage is basically the sign that exists out next to Palm Canyon Drive. This basically is a display case. And during last season, the Follies put a television screen in here, and it was an open cabinet, and it basically had a plywood screen around it to make sure that the TV was concealed and safe and not a subject to vandalism and theft. What they've proposed is coming back in and creating a situation where you just complete the triangle with another panel that would basically have a sign on this side with the television, a sign on the backside in the same scale. It would actually be the exact same frame on the backside so that it matches up and reads the same way. And the intent here basically is, instead of trying to make this a thick cabinet, was to come back in and do a little reader board with the idea that instead of advertising the Follies, it would take and utilize our marketing program that Main Street's been working on, Palm Canyon Drive, Share the Legend, and basically then let people know which direction different types of land uses are. So, you really wouldn't see the backside of the sign. You would see the front side from the Palm Canyon side. Design review looked at it and provided that the cabinetry is the same on the backside, that all venting be out the top and the bottom because they do have a heat problem, so they have to put some fans in. And then, instead of having a mesh detail that ties the sign into this building so you can't see behind it or reach in there and get behind it, to basically come in and just finish the triangle with a solid backing. So, this would look like it sets away from the building and doesn't try to engage the building. A little bit of a different approach. We did meet with the applicant in the field. We looked at plasma screen TVs and getting into the real thin modules that would fit right in the cabinetry. The concern about theft and vandalism goes up dramatically when you get into the higher technology TVs. And there was a concern that they also could be fairly fragile relative to heat because this is going to be out and get a lot of afternoon sunshine. And if the TV wears out, it's a lot easier to come back in and replace it with a traditional flat screen that is the full-depth TV. It's probably a pretty good solution. Design review was comfortable. They felt that maybe the coloring of this poster, and I know that Jerry worked real quickly to kind of come up with something, and that can be worked on, and that's a temporary type insert. But the idea is, as I've indicated, we've established what we think the findings are in your motions agenda, and that completes our report. Jerry's here to answer any questions that you might have.
One question.
Do we have any questions in of staff or Mr. Augburn?
I do.
Ms. Morantz.
Now, this is a specific case with a specific zone and a specific thing, and we're not going to find ourselves in this predicament again with... Can you envision anything else where we could conceivably think we would be hanging ourselves on this issue? Because I certainly would not like to see this all over downtown.
Well, the only other places the ordinance would allow this type of use would be at Desert Museum or at the Palm Canyon Theater. So, the ordinance is tailored. It's very similar to your previous comment on the large resort project. Could somebody else propose and ask that we change the laws? Certainly, they could. And we have effectively abated televisions and windows previously. The timeshare people put them in the doorways, and we treat them as signs, and they have to be three feet back. So, creative people will always look for a loophole. Somebody will think that this is an automatic right and put it up, and we'll just use the enforcement tools that we have and persuasion to remove it. I think we'll be in pretty good shape.
Mr. Evans, let me... I also have a question. This TV, do I understand correctly that what it does is they have a cassette, they put it in, and it plays a sort of a tease for the show? Is that what we'll see there?
Yes. And brightness-wise, it's like any other TV that's outside. You have to really go up to it to see it. If you're too far away because of the light we have, particularly during the day, it doesn't read particularly as well as it could. And that's why we talked to the applicant about maybe different types of technology, and they just felt that at this size and scale, this location, that other technology didn't work very well.
Any other comments or questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, we... The planning commission did not vote positively on this particular change in the ordinance, and the council felt fit to enact this ordinance, and they have the knowledge to do that. So, I think it ought to go to them. And with that, I'd move we deny the sign permit.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to deny this application and a second. Yes, Mr. Evans.
I respect the motion on the floor and always do so with the planning commission. The city council took the commission's advice and counsel about the ordinance, and they chose differently. The city council negotiated a new lease with the Follies that says they can keep the sign. You're making a very strong statement by running it up to the council. You certainly could. I'm just asking you, it'll be a 30-day issue, fair amount of staff work to go through the appeal process. That's just a comment prior to the action on the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I guess, I mean, just to put this into context, Mr. Evans, that when this ordinance was proposed, this television was there and playing. And so, am I correct in assuming that when the council overruled the commission, they overruled the commission with the... On the assumption that the applicant was going to come and apply or make an application to have approval for the television set, which was already there? I mean, is that... If I got that in the proper context?
Well, clearly, we crafted the ordinance to allow the opportunity for this application to come to the planning commission. The council debated at great length when they considered the ordinance as to whether or not they should just make this sign permit come directly to the council. And the council members had a debate. They really had some disagreement over it. Some said, "If the commission's going to deny this, just make the ordinance, say it comes to the commission..." or "the council." The majority of the council basically said, "We do not feel it's appropriate to set up a mechanism where any type of sign or any type of development that normally goes through our design review and planning commission process goes directly to council." That they did not want to set that precedent. That opens the door for special interest lobbying to just have council approval on certain types of things. I think the council was optimistic that a design could come up that would meet the design standards that the commission sees fit for the community. Jerry and I worked with the applicant. We tried the flat screens ideas, narrow cabinetry, things of that nature. We talked about different technology, and I think came to the conclusion that the best thing to do would be to replicate the existing sign and have a different type of message when you leave. So, we tried real hard, and the council clearly understood that this could get locked up at the commission stage and come back up to the council.
Yeah, I don't think that... I don't... Mr. Wright?
Doug, in the staff, you're comfortable with the new arrangement that you've made, and that's the staff's recommendation?
It's probably the best we can do with all the circumstances, without going to different type of technology if there's going to be a video screen. And that would just be a flat-screen type situation where you have a very narrow panel that looks like the existing, and you're not adding any mass and bulk to it. And the difference here is you're just finishing it on the backside, and that triangular mass is larger, gives a different image, and also kind of promotes downtown as you leave. So, it's a little bit different concept.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
My compliments to the staff. I think the triangle is a good solution if there's going to be a TV cabinet in there, and I think the system is working. And I would call for a question.
Just one other question. Mr. Evans, what are the hours that this TV will play? Do we know?
I think it runs during normal business hours, and then I think it shuts down late at night. I'd have to double-check. I'd have to double-check.
Is that, is that normal business hours that the Follies are open or, or all day long?
Jerry, do you know if they close it down when the, the end of the, about 10 o'clock?
But when does it start? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I, and I think, just, just to make a comment, I, I don't think that, that there's any, any feeling here of, of hurt feelings that the, that the council disagreed with the commission on this, and, and I don't sense here in the, on the commission that, 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 that a negative vote would be for, for any reason other than the same reason that the commission, if there are negative votes, voted negatively in the first place, and that is that, that, that there are members of the commission then and perhaps now who don't feel that this television is appropriate. If council wants it, then certainly council, you know, is entitled to have it, and, but it's a little difficult for me. I voted against this the first time, and I, I still really am not in favor of it, and so I, I'm probably going to vote no on this, but not because I'm trying to defy council, but it's uncomfortable for me, having voted against it once, to now say that I'm in favor of it. And so, I don't feel comfortable doing that, but I certainly understand council's prerogative, and if they feel that it's appropriate there, then I, I'm not going to disagree with them. But I, it's hard for me to have said no to this when it came up the first time to, no, no, no ill feelings about it all. It's just hard, hard to say that, that now that I accept it or approve it. So, that's sort of where I'm coming from.
But, but the way she motioned, motioned was not...
It's to deny.
To deny.
The motion is to deny. The motion is to deny.
Yeah, the motion on the floor is for a denial, and I, and I feel the same way. I don't really, you know, it's okay that the council did what they did, and that, and, and as you indicated, it's part of a larger agreement that's probably already approved, and that's fine. I mean, that's to the council. What I don't understand is you raised something about a 30-day, so this is denied, and they appeal it, and they go to the next council meeting, and it gets approved. And we're on record where we are, and they're on record where they are, and, and they're the superior body, and that's great. That's exactly how it works. Is, is there another staff problem that I'm not aware of, other than you got your commission and your council sort of at odds on a, on a minor issue? This is not a hill to die on. The moment I vote, I'm going to walk out of here and forget about it. It's not an important issue confronting the city, and if this is what the council wants to do...
Anyway, we'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, which, all those in favor of the motion, which is to deny the application, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
So, the vote is six to one in favor of the, of denying the application. And I hope when you bring the matter to council, you'll, you'll deliver our comments to them.
Yes, we will, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
That takes care of all of our items on the agenda. We have commission work program, item number 11.
Six new.
General plan update.
Mr. Chairman, we gave you the general plan subcommittee update last study session, so I won't give you any additional information there. No additional item on work program, subcommittee assignments. Council Cabinet meeting tonight at 7:00 PM, and, Mr. Chairman, you're going to attend?
Yes.
The commission may like to give the chairman ideas on, on what you would like to have him update the council on. I'm going to be doing an update tonight on the general plan subcommittee and where they are, what they've been doing. It's not going to be a very lengthy report, but the commission has been very active, and you might want to give the chairman direction on his report. Anybody have any direction? I'm, I'm going to make some, some brief remarks on the level of our activity and some of the matters that we've looked at that are in the, in the, in the pipeline, but I'm not going to take a lot of time in making the report, other than to comment on the high level of activity and, and, and mention a few items that are, that are in progress.
Any, any other commission work program items, Mr. Evans, that you want to comment on?
No, sir.
All right. Council, City Council action, actions?
There were no planning items before the City Council last week for, that's the first time in awfully long time. It's a very short meeting. We were done in less than an hour. Tonight, I've already indicated it's council cabinet.
Commission staff reports and requests?
Actually, I'm sorry to go back to the council cabinet. Maybe one, one thing that I think I would personally like to represent to the council is that as the planning commission, I think we support the staff's request for further staffing because we have an inordinate amount of work, and without the support to do it, it'll just, I mean, this is going to become an absolute nightmare, so I don't know how my fellow commissioners feel, but in terms of all of the functions of the city, if we want to be business-friendly, I mean, and I think the council understands that, but you might want to carry the message that we're in, as council, as commissioners to the council members, that we are in concurrence with that.
We'll do that. Anything else? If not, meeting's adjourned. See everybody in two weeks.